Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, Meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, I'd like to note that Chairman O'Quinn and Commissioner Rofolsky are joining us via live stream through Teams tonight. So they will be here to hear, the chairman asked me to conduct the meeting tonight. So I have asked Commissioner Booker to lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come before you once again with bowed heads and humble hearts, thanking you for this day, thanking you for this community, Heavenly Father, thanking you for the hearts of the people in this community, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, peace, love, and hope. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless us in this community, in our work, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask now that you, that you help with peace throughout this world, not just our brothers and sisters in Ukraine, Heavenly Father, but all over the world. But there are wars where the cameras are not there, Heavenly Father, and people are dying, your people, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask now that you come and dwell in this meeting with us, provide the guidance that we need to make the right decisions, Heavenly Father, in your name. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd like to take just an extra moment to remember those people in Ukraine and the good people in Russia that are sacrificing as well, that we would keep the Ukrainians in our prayers. We pray for peace, and most especially for God's will, if you'll just join me in a minute. Thank you. Well, we had no one sign up for public comment period tonight, and we have no presentations or announcements. And at this time, I think there are some amendments to our agenda that we need to address. I think your mic's not on.
There we go. All prepared. Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 1.1 to the published consent agenda to consider approval of the Glen County zoning update project timeline.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
All right, so we'll add item 1.1.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 1.2 to the published consent agenda to consider approval of a proposal for additional services for the Glen County zoning ordinance and subdivision update to TSW for $20,000, with funding to be provided from the Planning and Zoning Professional Services Account 1007410.521200.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor to add item 1.2, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
All right. 1.2 will be added.
All right, I move to add item 1.3 to the published consent agenda to consider approval of professional service contract with Goode Management Group to assist with preparation for SPOLOSH 2022 project list.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise their right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
Okay, so 1.3 will be added to our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 33 to the published agenda to consider approving the issuance of a purchase order for six Ford interceptor pursuit vehicles to Brandon Ford utilizing state contract number 9999-SPD-ES40199409-001, in the amount of $206,400 with funding, and the amount of $239,025 to be provided by Capital Projects Fund Line Item 3153310-542200, and $3,363 to be provided by the Capital Projects Fund Line Item 3153310-542500, and approve the remaining $72,964 in line item 3153310-542500 to be utilized as budget to equipment said vehicles. That's got to be a Tamara Munson.
Yeah, that is, that is a mouthful. We have a motion by Commissioner Brunson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir.
So item number 33 will be added to our agenda tonight. I hear a motion to approve our consent agendas.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, except for removing item 19.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, except for removing item 19, or any other items that the commissioner wishes to remove.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve our consent agenda, both General Business and Finance Committee?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other item that we wish to pull?
Pull item 19 from the consent agenda.
Okay, noted. Item 19 is pulled. And any others at this time? All right, with that being said, we have a motion by Commissioner Booker to approve our consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to approve our consent agenda, with the exception of item number 19. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
All right, so that is unanimous. Okay, item number 19. Approve entering into an instructor agreement with Danny Moore to instruct pickleball lessons at county parks with funds from the FY22 and FY23 Recreation and Parks Department operating budget. Ms. Garganis is with us tonight. And Commissioner Tosterson, if you want to lead the way?
I just asked if we pulled this.
Okay, no comment on it at this point?
No comment.
All right. Ms. Garganis?
So commissioners, we brought this item to the Finance Committee last week, and what we're asking is for your approval to enter into an instructor contract with Danny Moore to offer pickleball lessons. As we do with all of our recreation instructional programs, we enter into contracts with those folks that are qualified to instruct certain lessons for recreation programs. We collect all of the fees for the programs from people who were interested in participating. And then, once we have a full class and are ready to go, we get, we give the instructor the roster, we put them out on the court, and then the instructor teaches the classes. At the end of the session, we pay the instructor a percentage of the fees that we have collected for those programs. So there is no impact in reality to the county budget. Our current split with our instructors for all of our instructional programs is 70/30, meaning we collect 100% of the funds that come in from the participants who choose to play or participate in these programs. They are then paid 70% out back to them for the services. The county then retains the 30% extra. This is a standard operating procedure for our department. It's, the instructor contract template is the same template that we utilize for other programs such as swim lessons, tennis lessons, volleyball, snorkeling, scuba, karate, et cetera. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garganis. And, and just to clarify, these are, it says in the proposal that the funds come from the FY22 and 23, but basically that's a flow-in and flow-out kind of transaction, and we retain 30% of the fees that are collected in this?
That, that is correct. The revenue more than offsets the cost to pay out to the instructor for the program. And the instructor only teaches when there are people that have paid and signed up for the classes. If there, if no one signs up for the classes, they're not held, and the instructor does not receive any compensation.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Lisa, I went over and, of course, talked to the pickleball group at St. Simon's and some of the heads of the club. It sounds like to me that they're concerned about finding the instructor block of time or space to do that on St. Simon's. Can we kind of steer that towards the Brunswick courts?
Yes, sir. That's a, that's a great question, a great point. The current, the group that plays frequently to the St. Simon's courts, they generally play in the mornings. There are people in the community who can't participate in the mornings who want to learn pickleball, and thus why we've reached out to Mr. Moore, and we're looking to, to bring this as, as a program under our wing. So we can serve people at North Glen, we could, we could do lessons at Baldwin Brookman Park, Blithe Island, Howard Coffin. The, the lessons could be held just about anywhere. Mr. Moore is here tonight, if y'all have any specific questions for him. But once, if the agreement is approved, we would work with him to then schedule sets of lessons. And yes, we, we would definitely try to avoid the times that we know are pretty busy. In the last four years, what we've done, when people have contacted us about learning the game, we've basically told them, well, there's, there's a large group of people that play, and they're happy to teach you. You can go just join in. But there are people in, in the world, in the community, who are, might be intimidated in that kind of environment, having maybe never picked up a paddle before, never played. And so this is just an alternative opportunity for people who may want to learn the game, who either A, can't meet up with that group, or B, don't want to learn in that environment, so.
Well, that was the feedback I got. And I just keep saying it to our community, because of age demographics have changed. When I grew up, Sammy grew up, we, we played football and baseball, we never heard of soccer. And look at how soccer took hold and the investments we've made in that. So I think, you know, we have to recognize that that's what's happening with the demographics and age group for pickleball. So that was the only feedback. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any, any other comments by our commissioners? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve entering to instructor agreement with Danny Moore to instruct pickleball lessons at county parks with funds from the FY, FY22 and FY23 Rec and Parks Department operating budget.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
No.
All right, that is one no. And then, on our panel, we have two no's. So that is approved, five for and two against, approval of item 19 on our agenda. That completes our consent agenda. We move on to General Business, item number 29. Consider the issuance of a purchase order to McGrath Industries DBA Talbot Tennis for RFQ number 22-RP130, in the amount of $46,595, with funding to be provided by the District Five Capital Allocation Fund. And Ms. Garganis, you're with us again.
Yes. Commissioners, yes, sir. This item is coming to you tonight instead of, it bypassed the Finance Committee, and the reason for that is because of the timing of it. We wanted to go ahead and, and put this before you for consideration, and if approved, try to get it scheduled sooner. So in early February, the board approved issuing an RFQ for resurfacing of the courts at Selden. There's two tennis courts there. They're in pretty rough shape. Commissioner Booker had approached us and said that he would be willing to support the project with district fund capital allocation. We issued the bids in early February. We received one bid back from McGrath Industries for $46,595. Considering the condition of the courts, we feel like this is a good price. McGrath has done a, a good bit of work for the county in different projects over the last several years and beyond. And they always do very professional, high-quality work. And so we're bringing it forward for you tonight to consider to issue a purchase order. And if approved, we would go ahead and work on the paperwork and try to get the work scheduled, hopefully by the end of March, early April.
Thank you, Ms. Garganis. Commissioners, any questions? Then we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this item 29 as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Brunson to approve Talbot Tennis for $46,595. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
That was yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that is unanimous. Item number 30. Consider approving the request to award contract services for coroner transport services to LW Jackson to do trips to the crime lab and back, and Kertron Transport Services to do local transports, with funding to be provided by the county coroner's operating budget. And Mr. New, you're with us tonight. Thank you for joining us, and floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, back in January, I requested through Jason that we bid out our transport services due to staffing issues with the current company. And we received four bids, two of which stood out as, I say lower bids. One was lower from the scene to the house, I mean, from the scene to the morgue, and then one was lower from the morgue to the crime lab. So Jason asked about, could we split these contracts amongst the two companies? And in the bid in RFP, we put that the company is required to have three years of business, be in business for three years, which LW Jackson was that other bid, and they haven't, they can't provide documentation that they've been in business for three years. So I'm requesting we go with Kertron for, for everything on the transports.
All right. Thank you, Mr. New. Mr. Hagan, do you have anything to add to that tonight?
No, Commissioner, I'm just here for support.
All right, and commissioners, then?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did ask that we split this bid because the Jackson company is local. And I, you know, I just don't see us supporting a company that's outside of here when we can support somebody local. And this is not giving them all of it. It's, you know, still giving the other company something. And just the, I don't think that the staff felt that them not having three years was something that should keep them from getting part of this contract, because they, that was their recommendation to split it. And so I'm just really basically agreeing with them. So I just don't think we should not be supporting new small businesses here when we can.
Doing when you're transporting bodies, if you transport a body from one place to another, and then another contractor picks it up and takes it to another location, is a body considered evidence?
It is.
Okay.
And these companies are bonded. So if the, we have one company take it, take the body from the scene to the morgue, and then the next day or a couple days later, another company takes it from the morgue to the crime lab, and the seal has been cut off the bag, or anything we attached, any evidence, sometimes we have attached blood, blood samples inserted outside of the bag, or medications. So if any of that went missing, it'd be a problem trying to determine which company was at fault for it.
And you deal with this on a, on a daily basis?
Yes.
One other question. You're the coroner. You deal with this on a, on a daily basis, and, and this is what you do, this is what you're elected to do. What is your recommendation?
Go with Kertron for everything.
For, for everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, let, let, let me just speak to that. I, and I respect the coroner and his opinion. He's the professional in this. But again, when we have an opportunity to support our local businesses, small businesses, I think we should do that. And as far as the change of custody, if they're bonded and there are some issues, then you deal with that. Even if it's just, if we just use that one company, it could be some issue with them. These are all professionals. If, if they didn't meet the requirements for staff, the staff said, split it up. The only difference was that they have, they have not been in business for three years. I just don't think that should disqualify our own local small businesses. I just don't think that should disqualify our own local small businesses.
Commissioner, you're preaching to the choir about doing business with local companies, but if we put an RFP out, Jason, with three years as the criteria, then it seems to me that if we're going to eliminate a criteria, whatever it is, that that, that needs to go back out to bid. I mean, that's, you know, we're talking about a level playing field here, and we're creating an unlevel play. Well, I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying that the, the criteria ought to be the criteria, and I don't think that it's fair to the rest of the marketplace to, at the last minute, just say, we, we're gonna, we're not gonna look at this one. So, square, I mean, do we have an obligation to, to adhere to the criteria which was put out to bid?
You, I think your one option is to rebid it, and I think Mr. Hagan will also, I think, tell you that. Your other option is to, you can waive a technicality, and if you view that three-year rule as a technicality, you can waive it under your policy rules, but you're under, under no obligation to do so.
Well, I guess I would like to know why the staff recommended this.
Come, come to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. In my opinion, I'm trying to save money, and it was a $10, it was $10 less for the route to Pooler. And then, we had a route to internally in Glen County. And so, I was trying to do the cheapest, which was to split the bid.
Split it will save us money overall.
Right, it would save us $10 a trip. Yes, sir. Between 10, I think it was 10 and $20 a trip.
I've got a question, and I wasn't quite clear on what Commissioner Brunson was saying. But basically, what we're gonna try, if we rebid this, we're gonna have to rebid this two different ways. We're gonna have to bid a contract that will take it from the, the crime scene to the morgue, and then the other company would bid from the, from the morgue to the crime lab. It'd be two separate bids coming in on this project instead of the one that we've got now?
Commissioner, and so, what we would do, it was, it would be from the point of origin, where the body is found, to the crime lab, and then back to the morgue in Brunswick. The other route would be from the point of origin to the, to the morgue. So, in those cases, we wouldn't have to go to the crime lab. This would, it only goes to the crime lab if, if there's an investigation, is that correct?
I still feel like we need to go with the coroner's recommendation on this, just due to the fact that this is the, this is, this is your job, this is what you're elected to do, and I feel like the commission should support your, your decisions.
Thank you. I keep up with your office a pretty good bit, and you're a very busy office, and you are an elected officer, and I, I support local businesses. What happens when you're over capacity in calls? In other words, you, you've got more, more bodies to move than you have your primaries provider in the past, and I realize that was some of the problem. They were short-staffed. I understand that. This.
Yeah, Kertron has told me, Kertron has told me they're gonna have three vans here.
Okay.
And every one they're hiring is local.
All right. I guess that was my main concern, and when you shared that with me the other day when I asked about it, that, that was, that was good for me. All right, I'm glad to make a motion, or whoever, or Sammy.
All right, any other discussion, Commissioners? Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request to award the contract to Kertron Transport Services for car transport services with funding to be provided by the county coroner's operating budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
And that is, and then any opposed? All right, so that is six for and one against. The motion is read. So, thank you. Thank you. Item number 31. Consider awarding Dr. Ramsey a contract renewal for veterinary services in the amount not to exceed $54,600, with funding to be provided by the FY-22 Animal Services Operating Budget, valid for one year until a permanent veterinarian can be hired as hired on his full-time staff, whichever comes first. And Mr. Hagan, your report?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. Good evening. Dr. Ramsey has worked for the county as a contract employee for the last year. She has done a very good job with us, and so, we would like to continue her contract until we can find a permanent replacement, a, a permanent vet. And so, the idea would be to increase her salary, or, or her rate per day to $600 per day. And then, we would also not require her to have her personal staff member, sir. And in doing so, we would not exceed $54,600, and we would ask her to stay until we could find that permanent veterinarian.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Any, Commissioners, any discussion on this item? Then I would entertain a motion. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve awarding a contract to Dr. Ramsey for renewal veterinary services in the amount not to exceed $54,600, with funding to be provided by the FY-22 Animal Services Operating Budget, valid for one year or until a permanent veterinarian can be hired on his full-time staff, whichever comes first.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tosterson. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
And our, our thanks to Dr. Ramsey.
Item number 32. Consider approving the cancellation of PO number 22000211 and PO number 22000312 issued to Wade Ford, and approve the issuance of a purchase order utilizing the emergency exception of a purchasing ordinance to Brandon Ford in the amount of $471,100 for the purchase of 14 Ford Explorer Pursuit vehicles, with funding to be provided by the FY-22 Police Fund. And Chief, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Assistant Chief Rick Evans, Glen County Police Department, on behalf of Chief Jock Batiste, who couldn't be with us tonight. We're asking for a issuance of a purchase order to Brandon Ford for the purchase of 14 police pursuit Ford Explorers. We had came to you all early in the year, and we issued the POs for the two, two different purchase orders. The problem with it is that the ones that we had for Wade Ford, which was under state contract, do not have the rear passenger air. That would be inhumane for anybody that we're transporting, or the K-9 partners that we use on a daily basis. Staff was able to locate 14 of the police vehicles that would service our community, and it was actually a cheaper rate. We would be saving $11,571. There are some features that won't be on there, like the spotlight, which we could substitute something else for that as well. So, based on that, the vehicles are ready to be transported if approved, and they will bring them here to us. So, we're asking if the commission would grant that PO for us to receive those 14 vehicles from Brandon Ford in Unadella, Georgia.
Thank you, Chief Evans. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the cancellation of PO number 22000211 and PO 22000312 issued to Wade Ford, and approve the issuance of a purchase order utilizing emergency, exception of the purchasing ordinance to Brandon Ford in the amount of $471,100 for the purchase of 14 Ford Explorer Pursuit vehicles, with funding to be provided by the FY-22 Police Fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number 33. Consider approving the issuance of a purchase order for six Ford Interceptor Pursuit Vehicles to Brandon Ford utilizing state contract number 99999-SPD-ES40199409-001, in the amount of $206,400, with funding in the amount of $239,025 to be provided by the Capital Projects Fund Line Item 3153310-542200, and $3,363 to be provided by the Capital Projects Fund Line Item 3153310-542500, and approve the remaining $72,964 in line item 3153310-542500 to be utilized as budget to equip said vehicles. Wow. Sheriff Jop, thank you for joining us tonight.
Commissioner, I asked if I could do one clarification before Sheriff spoke. The purchase, the original purchase that was approved was on a state contract. Because Wade Ford did not have the vehicles, we are asking that we pull that back. The state contract item that's on that memo, we need to delete that. There is no state contract. It would be the same as the police department. We would be purchasing under the emergency purchasing.
So, under the proposal that we're entertaining tonight, the state contract number 99999 and so forth?
Right, we can take that off, sir.
Would be struck, okay?
The amounts would stay the same.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Sheriff?
Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank y'all for taking time to be here. I'm Neil Jop, Sheriff of Glen County. As Assistant Chief Evans said, we're kinda in a pickle with vehicles. Our last budget, we requested six vehicles. At the time, they were Dodge Chargers. With the mechanical problems and the lack of being able to get the Chargers until late 2023, we went to Wade Ford for Explorers. They can't provide the air conditioners for the rear. We located six at Brandon Ford. There's one white one for $33,400. The other are five grays, that's $34,600 apiece. I'm asking that you give consideration so that we can get the six Ford Explorers from Brandon Ford.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, Commissioners? Could I entertain a motion?
How many vehicles altogether are we getting?
For, for me, six. For the county, PD, 14, I think it is.
So, it's 20 altogether, 20, 20 altogether?
Yes.
Tonight? Okay.
Commissioners, the motion that's on your green sheet is correct for the, the vote. Just the motion that was used for adding the item to the agenda was incorrect. So, you can go ahead and read off your green sheet for the motion for approval.
And Ms. Munson, I assumed that was you, but could not hear you very well. Is there any way to turn up a volume?
I just wanted to let you know, the motion on your green sheet for approval is correct. It was the motion that was used to add the item to the agenda that we didn't get the language changed on. So, you can read directly off your green sheet for the motion for approval.
All right, thank you. And, and would we read that motion with the exempting the state contract number, or? I'm not clear on that.
If you would remove the state contract number, sir.
And, and read it as, as it reads, other than that?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I got the right one here. I move to approve staff, and this cancellation also, in this motion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, because we're gonna cancel a purchase order to Wade Ford.
Just wanted to make sure I was reading it right. I move to approve staff to cancel the original purchase order to Wade Ford and replace the purchase order with an emergency purchase order to Brandon Ford for six Ford Interceptor Utility Pursuit Vehicles in the amount of $206,000, $206,400, with funding in the amount of $203,037 provided by Capital Projects Fund Line Item 3153310-542200, and $3,363 to be provided by the Capital Projects Fund Line 3153310-542500, and approve the remaining $108,952 in the line item 3153310-542500, be utilized as the budgeted to law enforcement equipment for said vehicles.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion on this item? And Ms. Munson, on the, on the motion to approve the remaining $108,952 on that line as opposed to the original green sheet motion of $72,964, can you explain that difference for us?
Commissioner, if you don't mind, I'll explain that.
Thank you.
That money was approved for the sheriff to use as his equipment the first time around, and so, we kept the original amount for him so that he could use that equipment, use that money for the equipment, as he bought the six new cars from Brandon.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
No, all right. So, we have a six for and one against the approval of this item number 33. And gentlemen, that concludes our regular agenda for tonight. We do have calls for executive session. Mr. Attorney, can you give us the purposes tonight, please?
Yes, sir, we have property acquisition and potential litigation discussed.
Property acquisition and potential litigation for executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Booker, and a second by Commissioner Fendig. You can tell how excited we are to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
I couldn't understand you. Was that a no?
No, yes.
Okay, all right. The no was a yes, so we have a yes to go into executive session from Commissioner Rofolsky. That makes it unanimous, and we stand in recess for executive session. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Thank y'all for coming tonight.[542.54]
And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky?
Yes.
That is unanimous?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have two motions. First one here is I move to add an item to the agenda to approve and ratify the agreement to purchase real estate with Glenco Properties LLC.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, do I hear a second? Have a second by Commissioner Booker. Sorry, Commissioner Booker, I choked. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky?
Yes.
All right, man, that sounded like a no again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to pick on you. That is unanimous to add the item to the agenda.
All right, and with that, I make this motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners, Glen County Board of Commissioners approve and ratify the agreement to purchase real estate with Glenco Properties LLC for Glen County's purchase and acquisition of approximately 4.45 acres of property located on 1599 Glenco Parkway, Brunswick, Georgia 31525 at a purchase price of $940,000 and authorize the chairman to execute all necessary closing documents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? Will be noted that this is more property than we need for this road improvement and the remainder of it would be put back up for sale. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky, I see your hand raised.
Yes.
So that may be more clear than your voice. That is unanimous?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that the Glen County Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from the February 15th, 2022, and February 17th, 2022 executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve our minutes from executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky?
Yes.
That's a yes. That is unanimous?
Yes.
Any other business to come before the commission tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
I move that we approve Glen County Attorney's recommendation regarding property acquisition.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the county attorney's recommendation on property acquisition. Didn't get that out. Any other discussion on the matter? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky? I saw a hand up. So that is unanimous? Any other business to come before the commission tonight? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And by roll call, Chairman O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rofalsky?
Yes.
Hands up, that is unanimous? We stand adjourned.